Welcome, everybody. This is the City of Placa Workshop with Placa Housing Authority. We'll call this meeting to order. Could you read the special called Workshop News, please, Ms. France?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Commissioner Tammy McHassel, Will Jones, Rufus Borum, and Justin Campbell. You heard by notified a special called Workshop of the Placa City Commission hereby called for June 5th, 2023, 3:30 at City Hall, 201 North Second Street, Placa, Florida, 32177. The purpose of the workshop is to discuss available city surplus, real estate, and Placa Housing Authority properties for development and housing opportunities, please govern yourselves accordingly. I'm Robert M. Correa, I'm Mayor of City Placa.
Thank you. For the stand for the invitation, Pastor Mulberry.
Father, we give you glory and praise for your kindness towards us. Father, we thank you because you have blessed us to come together once again. You pray, God, that your hand will rest upon us and that your wisdom will be with us and that you will guide us in all endeavors. We need your help. We call upon you for help because you is our help. You woke us up and we thank you. Bless us now in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. When you can leave this, Commissioner McHassel, please. I would like to link to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go, Paul, please, Ms. France.
Commissioner Tammy McHassel here. Commissioner Justin Campbell.
President.
Commissioner Rufus Borum.
I'm present.
Commissioner Will Jones.
Present.
Madam Rock Mayor, Robbie Correa.
Present.
All members, President accounted for him. I know it's a workshop, but I'm gonna say we have a forum because we do.
Thank you. I'm going to open up the floor to public comments. Is there anybody here for public comments? Saying now, who will comment on to agenda items? Number one, Placa Housing Authority Positioning Plan. I'm trying to think of this at a ten-minute timeframe. We have to be back to doing it, frankly. Please remember to turn on the mic also.
I have a two-minute, and the reason, I'm gonna go ahead and put it out there. The reason we workshop this was so that we would have ample enough time to discuss. So I'm in disagreement with a lot of the amount of time because that's what we came to this workshop for, is to be able to have as much time needed.
Commissioner McHassel?
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Campbell. That's the reason that we put it in a recommended or workshop format.
Um, say.
Yeah, if I can address that. So Commissioner, you'll notice there's four items on your agenda. The fourth item, open discussion, does not have a time allotment to it. Obviously, if you go over these ten minutes, it was just an idea that the mayor and I had to kind of move you through the first three items as quickly as possible so that you had ample time to have open discussion. But it's just a guideline.
Now, let's only the presentation, wasn't the discussion.
Thank you, Detective.
Dr. Wood?
Good afternoon, all. On behalf of the Placa Housing Authority, it's for the Commissioner. And I am pleased to say, by virtue of Zoom, I have a forum. I have two presidents here, in the front row, that will be my chair, Chairman Neshewa, and also Commissioner Bell. In attendance, I have several, two members, two that are inside and one that is still outside. Uh, I'm a mayor, City Commission. Thank you for providing us this opportunity to share with you, and thank you for your continued support of sustainability of affordable housing. We have a couple of things that we want to get to prior to, because this is a pretty short presentation of the finished repositioning piece. It's something that we visited and revisit now, 105 years, and most of you tend to recall. As you know, the Housing Authority was created by virtue of a cooperative operation agreement. And as a result of that, part of that was payment and real taxes, which is private. But along with that, you know, many cities, municipalities return a pilot to its local housing authority to party to. And the reason for that is to show that there is a working partnership. And, you know, even with that, the Housing Authority does the work in the process. They also have an increased policing contract. Housing Authority installs six license plates that keep the taxpayers' police, Placa Police Department. And most importantly, I think is necessary, that we are reminded that the Housing Authority, Placa Housing Authority, is not housing of last resort. Okay, that is essential. With that being said, we had a recent deal signed off by Governor DeSantis, Senate Bill 102. Recommend and strongly suggest that take the power to retrieve at least the opening statement and last statement of the summary. Such that housing citing this act as Live Local Act. And essentially, at least the authority of local governments to adopt and maintain laws, artists, rules, other measures that would have the effect of imposing controls on rents. Providing an exemption from have a land tax for land that meets certain criteria, authorizing local governments to adopt artists to provide an have a land tax exemption for fortunate property. Used to provide affordable housing needing certain requirements. Sustaining for a specified period, the general revenue fund source, a service charge on documentary staff tax collections, authorizing the governor. Into the Florida Job Growth Grant Fund to improve state or local public infrastructure projects to facilitate the development or construction of affordable housing. And right now, that's appropriated to $711 million. So with that being said, I want you to know that the Housing Authority has already made valiant efforts and we tried to bring staff forward with regards to some of the efforts that we've made. Of course, we've conducted environmental reviews on agency-wide and all of our property. We've had a consultant come down, former HUD employee, now who's actually online now with Bynne Consulting. Who basically conducted three frames that things that frame and exercise our review for us. One was the goal is to preserve as many hard units as possible so that residents can live in dignity. Two, new construction is extremely expensive, likely in his assessment, $350,000 per unit in hard costs. And thirdly, the agency has resources that it can contribute both to repositioning the existing 422 units. But also to developing, if feasible, the 62 frac company units that are outstanding. And that 62 is a result of the 484 units that the Housing Authority is allowed to build too. Okay, so 484 minus 422 is 62. And that specifically came from the demo disco of Judge Frank, okay? Communities Group, June this year will be conducting performance for us and basically site assessments with regards to what we can do with our property. And what would be deemed to be feasible for us doing. And now we're going to the positioning and repositioning. And for you to know that the author of, one of the authors, one of the two authors of PHA repositioning. Is actually the individual that would be conducting these reviews for us and providing us with performance. So I think that's good to know. Repositioning public housing, second, change of platforms and changing the mission. Next. So essentially, what it is a move towards is to be able to leverage our property, evaluation of our property, okay? Bear in mind our real resources, to be able to utilize that to go towards any other monies that we can procure in subsequent. For either significant modernization efforts or to raise and redevelop. Initially, I must say from the onset, it was almost 50/50. The agency had been saying for about four and a half years that about 50% of our inventory was obsolete. All right, beyond improvements and not able to make necessary improvements to be able to be competitive in market going forward. However, upon additional review and additional assessments, we believe that we can maintain and repay much of that inventory. If not upwards to 100%, certainly about 90 to 95%, we should be able to retain in our whole inventory. Which will allow us and afford us an opportunity to utilize those resources towards significant modernization efforts, and that means from infrastructure on, okay? Next. As you see again, that we're leveraging, suddenly leveraging repositioning success to RAD and RAD, the acronym for that, as you see there is general assistance demonstration. And that is one of a few tools that HUD has now in its toolbox for agencies to be able to further sustain affordable housing. Utilize new program flexibility in Section 18 demo and disco process, develop guidance on additional repositioning strategies. Okay? What do we mean by reposition? Facilitate the rehab or demolition and new construction of units by increasing access to financing to address capital needs. And that is significantly because the vast majority of agencies nationwide, you know, has more, on average, 10 to 15 years of deferred maintenance. And if you can imagine what that cost would be in a lump sum, it would be insurmountable. And so an effort to bring the boats, needed repairs forward is simply changing the ways and means we deliver the services that we deliver. So essentially, I'm commonly known for saying we're not changing the ways and means of travel, we're simply changing the vehicle that we utilize to travel. Thanks. Will there still be public housing? Yes, many PHAs operate successful PH programs with well-maintained units. PHAs operating public housing still have access to capital fund financing, operating fund financing, and ABC contracts. And our agency has all three that we're blessed to have. What does this mean for residents? The residents can probably turn their disjunction rather than I because we have met more than a white house. Users that are in better physical condition, continued availability of affordable housing, general assistance in their local communities. Additional flexibility to move to better housing and their places of opportunity. So HUD's role is to make sure PHAs are aware of all available repositioning strategies, okay? And provide technical assistance to help communities weigh their options. The decision to reposition is voluntary entirely up to PHAs and local stakeholders. So at the end of the day, you know, I think about this time three years ago, when we were seated somewhere in this area. I would utilize this phrase in term of sweet spot, right? That sweet spot has since disappeared. It's no longer there. And if you want to know what I mean by that, simply look at the state of the economy, look at the state of the fiscal needs of the nation as a whole. Look at the cost of goods and services and look at the challenges that we have with materials and the like. So Section 9 PH options, you have mixed finance rehab and development, choice neighborhoods, operating fund finance program. CF, capital fund financing program, energy performance contracts, Section 30 mortgaging. Repositioning options, RAD, Section 18 demo disco, RAD, Section 18 grants, voluntary conversion. And ironically enough, we have at least within our inventory, and some are joint apps or some are standalone apps. We have a category that can probably speak to each and every one of those options. Are your properties financially sustainable? What are the capital needs of the property? How much does it cost to operate? What does future HUD funding look like? Do I need to repeat that question? It's only been declined in the last 25 years. What is the market demand? Does the property have existing debt or other obligations? So the ideal situation was to be able to either build new construction or make significant modernizations entry. Which means by the time that we're completed with the TDC or rebuild or whenever the pace will be, there are no outstanding debts. That would be ideal. Not impossible, is doable, challenging, yes, but we can do it. Thank you. Do you have sufficient program reserves? I would bet you'd say we do. What do your admin and boss look like? Do you operate a housing choice voucher program? Do you have any staffing concerns or significant abilities? So we weighed it and weighed all of these and we still are fine-tuned as we go along. One of the things that my senior staff would tell you, usually within our Monday morning meetings, is that we're gonna get to where we need to be ultimately. And they look at what we're doing about a twenty minutes. What is the best for your community? What are the affordable housing needs in your area? Is the property in good location for local opportunities? What types of program do you want to administer? Can you place units in other areas of opportunity and leverage the property's value? Who will own and manage the property? So all of those theories and questions that are answered, I would put a nine out of 10. You would say ultimately the agency would either be directly or indirectly, that would be either directly owned and or managed. Or by way of general partner through low-income housing tax credits or whatever other funding resources we may invest in. So here, you have what it takes, or what it looks like when we are converting, okay? So essentially, you have the operating fund, capital fund, and tenant rent. So all of those are pre-conversion, that's prior to, okay? Once a conversion. Once a conversion from, let's just say, from ACC to non-ACC, you would have housing assistance payments, which is your half, and that is in virtual voucher, right? So if you are voucher provider, service administrator with us, then this is what we would get in return, and then a tenant rent. So CNA is a capital needs assessment identifying the unit's long-term needs. Long-term SA, HAPTRAC allows access to private sources of capital, which is tax credits, which you heard me mention earlier, and it's low-income housing tax credits. And financial analysts reminded me today that we probably missed this cycle of tax credits also for the state of Florida this year. Existing public housing funds can support conversion, pre-development costs, rehab, established property reserves, et cetera. PHAs can rehab existing site, demolish and reveal or transfer assistance to a new location. Resident right of return and prohibition against rescreaming. Streamline conversion for very small PHAs, fifty units or less. That is not applicable to us. However, the one just above it, I always like to expound upon that to ensure and provide a certain level of confidence that residents will have, existing residents will have the first right of return with regards to, and that is providing that they're still good standing. Now, you could go out there and do the seventeen twenty-sevens and then come back and say, I'm number three, no, okay? So SA enhancements, demolition clarified, ground and demo criteria to include costs required by local building codes and federal accessibility requirements, disposition, eligibility, unsustainable scattered site units for units of less and non-continuous sites. Units owned by PHA with fifty or fewer units who have SA team plan are more efficient or effective low-income houses. So in essence, when we run the numbers, that will literally drive and dictate what will be best for the agency. Eberlin, sustainable affordable housing. You know, you have a lot of programs that may appear to be very attractive from the onset, however, it's only a five to seven-year window of sustainability, and so we would seek to have the highest amount of pools. So it must show that it costs less to operate capital vouchers than with SA, SNI funding. Residents may remain in property as used or housing after conversion. PHA over will receive tenant protection vouchers. Streamline authority for small PHAs, however. The TBB, you know, that would be great for the immediate area. We know that we are not necessarily landlord. We're a landlord lot because there aren't as many affordable housing opportunities and there are landlords that are available who will be willing to accept and or receive a voucher. So those are challenges that the agency would always speak to from what you hear it say, our sixty-two Fair Court units. That will be at least sixty-two units in one particular area, or even if it's scattered, we will be able to accommodate at least sixty-two. So retention with DOT, and that is the deal of trust, okay? That is what HUDL holds on our property, our ACC properties. So for non-residential properties or residential properties that do not receive HUDL public housing subsidy, such as systems, was transferred through RAD, Section Twenty-Two Voluntary Conversion, or Section Thirty-Three require conversion. This is where we're trying to say a point though. Right now, we're still driving, okay? What we don't want to do is get to a position where HUDL then dictates what we can and or should do. Whereas right now, we have an opportunity, a window of opportunity still. That's quite the sweet spot, where you still have a window of opportunity to ensure the agency's best interest. PHA must repay HUDL in pro letter. Share HUDL initially invested fair market value. HUDL may waive this repayment if the PHA provides a good cause exception such as continuing to serve low-income families. Okay, we can go through that because that is not applicable to us, very small PHAs. That's for PHA with fifty or fewer units. As you heard earlier, we have four hundred and fifty-two. Okay, so the new HUDL authority is easier for PHAs to view project-based vouchers, PBBs, and follow public housing properties. Units are not subject to PBB program, unit limitation PHA-wide. Okay, units also not subject to income mixing requirement, public unit limitation. PHA can attach PBBs where it is and ownership interests are controlled without going through competitive award process. That would not provide TBB assistance to any unit that was occupied within twenty-four months of the demo disco application approved. And so as you would imagine, this is a process that takes place and so essentially, any request that we submit for demo disco would be submitted to Chicago Saks, which is special applications. The RAS transfer assistance authority that PHAs without ACV program, conversion, and new authority of two twenty-five percent of the systems through Section Eighteen RAD plan, and increase the potential revenue of a RAD conversion. So PHAs begin a Section Eighteen RAD plan conversion about beginning a regular RAD application. So which is the same process that you heard me mention earlier, authority, then minutes to Chicago Saks. So where do I start? Consider your local needs, consider the reposition options, talking to the board, talking to residents, and local stakeholders. Strategies, RAD, Section Eighteen Demo Disco, RAD, Section Eighteen RIN, voluntary conversion, and ultimately, it boils down to which works best of PHA, okay? Which is lack of housing. So tools that we use. And feel free, you all can go on to the site and you'll see in the library there much of the correspondence that we meant to our residents and other stakeholders. Right there, all of the program characteristics, essentially everything that we outlined earlier, from SA team to RAD to the RIN to the voluntary conversion, okay? Okay, and this is just a high-level view of what it would possibly look like. Of course, we would try and make it as available to the existing structures as would be so desired within the surrounding area of our community. And that is just an additional guidance to support accommodation for Fair Court, the RAD conversions. And one of the things I think necessary to state, you know, there was previous minimum sixty-month requirement for destruction of any new RSC properties, and as HUDL is now allow for agencies to convert the properties prior to that. We're essentially able to come under, we're not the part as opposed to the home. And that in and of itself is repositioning of the agency's ACC properties.
The next item I hope we can discuss, that is also exactly what could be someone else on your board. Homeownership Development Plan?
Okay, homeownership. As you see there, oh, you know, we're questioning that for a while.
I thought we were doing that, man. You can do it anytime if you want to do it.
Give her a hint. You're doing a hint.
Okay. The ticker thingy's working. Would you prefer it?
So this, okay, so this is. All right, as you see and as you heard earlier, we have four hundred and twenty-two ACC units. These are units that we own and match, okay? Units that you see under the agency's letter within the city or its jurisdiction. In addition to that, you find that we have twenty-five additional units called the ALs, adjacent to one of our properties there. You also see that we have, that number is actually higher now. We go right at three hundred and fifty-two ACVs, varying in type, are the additional ones, the management vouchers. And then you see the couple of branch, additional branch vouchers to give to federal, federal branch assistance. Here, I'm just giving a high level, and I'm going back because a query that I received with regards to the efforts that the agency had made, and I'm bringing it back all the way, and this, I'm sure, the Housing Authority's liaison, Commissioner Joe, will appreciate. This is data that was there when he was there because he was actually in a couple of these virtual awards meetings that we had with HUD DC. So this is a privilege report, so this essentially shows you everything that goes into the Housing Authority's decision to continue to work with the property or ultimately dispose of it. Mass, the Stepford Subsystem, potentially grave agency, and its ounce. So while the agency is FL zero five seven, the last three digits that you see on the end there are the different ounce that are comprised within the agency or the communities, okay? All of these numbers here that you see to the far left, as far as class scores, we've been averaging about ninety-four, ninety-five for the last four, five years.
So there is why I went back to two thousand seventy?
Yes, the same data that was utilized at the time, that's why I mentioned your name. Same, same data that was utilized there.
So what about fresh information? Do you have any fresh information on those four?
For the purposes in which we're doing this, this information is appropriate. I do have fresh information, but this information is appropriate. Because it speaks to the time in which we have made the necessary efforts that we have today.
But only because you mentioned it earlier, now, because we're here. You mentioned that things changed, that earlier you said fifty percent of the units were in certain state. Now that changed that, you feel ninety-nine, ninety-five percent are good. So that's why I asked that question, so where does that data kind of support that? That would be something.
The units are not necessarily good, I mean, I mean, to bring that to correction. The units are not necessarily good, that difference pays to the way that you pitch. What is good is the opportunity that the agency has to utilize, leverage resources to bring the infrastructure up to par so that it would increase and lengthen the sustainability of affordable housing of these existing units. That didn't change, you did change the structure, you know, with regards to, you know, bricks and mortar.
Yeah, it's a little more fun, I mean.
Okay, a different, a different, yes. There you go, you need to know that. It sounds like the fifty-four percent that you had at the end, so you get up to about ninety-nine, ninety-four, ninety-five. I'm an ultimate optimist, I'm saying. I would say all the, all the, raised but redeveloped, right? Somewhere in an effort to decrease density, right? For particular purposes of the property or community that we live in. And that's just right now, we've still got, I still have out there, remember, the PMA that I'm awaiting to be conducted, that will give me the perform, right? Some of the numbers will tell me, and that's what's going to be driving it. They're right there. Trust me, I've been reminded several times. All right, because I've been reminded several times. I'm not saying anything I couldn't, that are either preceded by or subsequent to, okay?
The written word.
I don't care. Oh, just look at my lips and listen to me. Look at the screen, or read your paper, you got it in both ways. All right, I just, all right. Current vacations, that's where we were, that's where we are. And I'll go through pretty quickly since, you know, our liaison already pointed out, it's stale.
Do you know what those dollars look like?
You said it relevant, though. It's absolutely relevant, because this is the same information that I shared at the roundtable. Okay, just jogging your number, regulation, okay? Help me help you help us. PHAs are restricted cash trending varied for the past four years at that time, okay? At that time. House receivables. And as you all know, public house receivables may have increased, the actual accounts payable, hello? And they call it a lot about, you know, the disease, we'll say. COVID has played a major role in that.
You said increase or decrease?
Receivables may have been collections decreased. You started out twenty, twenty-five.
Okay, so it just slippers. You have a big decrease.
Right, okay. Okay, maintenance expenses, as you might imagine, is all increasing on every level with regards to not only supplies, inventory, but labor cost in and of itself. Other revenue. And your PHA rental revenue. And your PHA rental revenue in twenty-eighteen, not subsidy, capital funds, and tenant rents. This is where we were then. Background, PHA has four hundred and twenty-two ACC units and is at ninety-nine for fifty-three percent in occupancy, total of five developments. They also have three hundred and forty-five ACV vouchers under ACC, a capital fund program, average, two seventy-five, eight ninety-seven, CFP, twenty-nineteen, one million. PHA vision. I can probably preface this with revisiting my initial statement regarding State Bill one oh two for our liaison. And I'll go and read, PHA is in the beginning stages of considering whether or not reposition, a good fit. We want general information on RAD, PBB, PBRAs, Section Eighteen. And PHA does have sixty-two units that we would like to review for previous, from a previous demo. Here's our inventory.
Data revenue received from the.
Evaluation of property. Nineteen sixty-two properties obsolete, while instructions are strong. And remember, this is based off of the original assessment that we have a year and a half, forty years. This has changed, this open sentence has changed to the fact what you see written beside each one now. The Westover Manor, we would seek to do a RAD with significant nod right now, and this is right now even still, until we get the performers to tell us that, hey, this is not what you want. This will not work best for this particular case. Madison Court, Heights, Hertzine, Jameson Loan, Rags Down, Spells, and then the two single-family homes on Law Street. So for the latter two, you see that we have voluntary conversion there. Voluntary conversion for open market and our PBBs for that, enemy spells, and voluntary conversion for a sale of single-family homes on Law Street. So here, the options that were discussed, even. So here, the options that were discussed, even when our liaison was in attendance, I was discussing the sale of those two properties again on Law Street. AMS, law, enemy spells would benefit from the RAD program. Not necessarily a voluntary conversion, which are good, and we can go up to, and we're at one-ten, a hundred and ten percent of fair market rent. So next steps, we mixed up this back and forth, up and down. PHA, continue discussion with Board of Commissioners. Repositioning is something that we would like to continue pursuing, and we will keep residents around and going and holding meetings as needed. Also want to submit a RAD out, once the board has approved submissions of an out, legislative meetings are continuous and held as needed. And there's the guidance that you see there, that website is good, so you can go to that for additional information on that. PHA updated its PHA plan, twenty-twenty to include repositioning, which was a significant amendment that we ensured was in the, the plan. PHA conducted environmental reviews within one hundred percent of its inventory in accordance to capital needs assessment items. PHA is working directly with field office in section eighteen, that's what I heard, determining the works, what works best for the agency. And you should know that there's been a tremendous turnover in that too. So we're working with differing people, three times going out in field office. But have a best, they too have this historical data that we bring forward. So here's some of the additional resources that you'll find concerning RAD and repositioning. And additional repeat of the strategies. Administration of the agency. Okay, so I believe we're at.
That's the discussion about city and housing authority.
Thank you, Mayor, this is really in here for informational purposes. We also have a interactive map, screens that you can pull up if you so choose to use it in your discussion. At the last meeting, the Duncan attended, PHA expressed an interest in city available surplus properties. So you've even included that list in your packet, and the map also shows the PHA owned properties, just for reference.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or comments or discussions on the property specifically?
Please.
Well, so this is, there is a summary of the property that's in the city. As far as how they own their properties, I mean, I want to start with the divided information. I, they're on that map as well, but I don't, don't keep up the numbers.
The home.
It's the blue programs, yeah. And again, it's just for reference, in some of the previous conversations, even today, you've probably heard about reference. Burning this to decentralize some of these assets scattered around the city. So we thought that helped the conversation to be able to see, you heard, check the signal black properties. See both side by side. But the broker's price opinion for the city available properties are in fact as well, in the event you need those to settle a discussion. But I think that just brings us to the open discussion portion of the agenda.
So, yeah, man. So my first question would be, what city-owned property is the housing authority interested in? For, whether it's the, excuse me, the construction of the Fair Park units or what, or to have as state or family owns or how, or what has.
Should, should we treat this venue, Commissioner, on basis of your question, like our last roundtable or workshop? Or do you want me to?
At, at the bottom of the table.
Thank, thank you so much, Doctor Woods, for going over the first three components. The genesis of this workshop, of this conversation, I don't know if you remember, at the last PHA meeting that you and the mayor attended as liaison, we discussed our commission and our commissioners voting to terminate negotiations with one of the developers that was bidding on our MDA, MDA, master development agreement, okay? Go ahead.
Before I, because my train of thought was going out.
Please do.
First question was.
I look at this like a workshop, not a presentation.
Right, so, so my question was, what property are you interested in?
That was part of the first question, I got all of them. Okay, all right, so the first question, I would have to say at or about Olive Street and Eleventh, we were looking for mixed-use build there, if I'm not mistaken. We were seeking to have retail on the lower level and those that hit you on the upper of that particular area.
There are two parcels that are coming out of the city on Beverlyton Mall, one in the southwest and one specifically, like one, one of them.
And we are helping, so, I'm not greedy, but I am needy, so I would probably say both. I know that the one that we lived at together, where we had the big, um, pine across the street, that would be the south there, would it not be?
Right, that's the south, that's the south.
Okay, so I believe my chair was looking at the north side, and he, he saw a more realistic image and view of what we were aspiring to build there.
So you have this, the project?
I gave him a, like a little bear.
Oh, okay, so which one of those?
On the side.
Yeah.
On the side of the ground.
Said one on the north, that's, or the one you look at?
Mr. Griffin. Keep him used to binder, I was off, City Attorney, since she's not good.
So this is what we live in.
Yeah.
The one that you were, you and I were looking at is on the left side.
So again, this is the door, yeah, yes. I'm interested in that, which part of North and Beverlyton, huh?
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
So, so, yeah.
He won, he won. There, that way down.
That's where you would have, yeah, the other.
Down.
There's three of them there, there's one to the north, and all of them as well.
I have one B. Well.
Yeah, they're just side by side, but it's sunny if you just, yeah. So there's that one, the one in the north of it, and the one on the other side of Olive Street, where you can barely see the portion of the tree.
So which one of those, that's one, and that's one, I can't read the numbers, right, that's right next to it. So which one of you, you know, or both of them?
Uh, I repeat the short answer, that my chair, it was all. Because we're looking at, not only, and in the second part of your question, uh, was the type of deal, right? So none of these were deemed to be suitable for our sixty-two Fair Park units, right? That, first and foremost. However, as for single-family homes, as for as a scaled-down retail residential bill that I mentioned earlier, or even a smaller multi-family deal, it would be ideal for that, and possibly even a duplex.
So. The reason why I asked about Fair Park is because I think, nineteen ninety-nine, when they were approved, the place, so twenty nineteen ninety-nine and twenty twenty-three, what have prevented PHA from developing or putting these sixty-two units somewhere in the public sector? What happened to prevent it?
I can only speak from twenty eighteen, August twenty eighteen to present day. Uh, and there was absolutely no support from any needed team members, or stakeholders, aside from the agency itself and the residents. No support from the city, no support from the county, no support from the. You know, no support from the city? Correct. Well, some, some of, I mean, I didn't know anything about you being, it's also heavily anything, so. And this was prior, prior to twenty fifteen?
Twenty fifteen, yeah, we had different mayors, we had different city managers. Public housing wasn't particularly popular during that period from the availability of those sixty-two units until today. Um, since I've been on the commission, not even as chairman, we've tried to develop and build and get those sixty-two units back. And through that period, we've seen property values skyrocket, and it's been difficult to compete uh, without certain subsidies, and that sweet spot that we missed that Doctor Woods was referring to, we missed it because those developers could make a lot more money than working on projects of our size and within the confines of RAD. And so we did not have support from the city, we did not have support from stakeholders.
In fact, then, um, okay, who, who, we're, the board is the city, so when you say the city, we talk about the commission as a whole?
Correct.
I'm not aware of anything from twenty fifteen to present that I was not, uh, I was part of, that I said I would support your cause.
Oh, of course, so I'm thinking of like Mr. Simbor from twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. Yeah, you know, and I'm, this is prior to my tenure, but since I've known Doc, Doctor Woods, and since your liaison was actually on, since Commissioner Jones was, of the city commission was on, Commissioner Jones of the Placca Housing Authority Commission, this has been a constant topic being brought up again and again, trying to get our sixty-two units back and applying for these programs. And so we've attempted to, and we've been, uh, we've been in a bottleneck of trying leverage, we keep hearing the term leverage. We need properties to be able to leverage in order to build new units, in order to renovate existing units, okay? In order to become attractive to other developers, because the offers that we're getting from developers are quite frankly insulting to the integrity of, of, of our board, of my board. And we're not going to give, give away the farm, which is what every developer wants. And so the genesis of this meeting was to make it to where our authority is more attractive, okay? To get properties that we can lever, to leverage in order to get more properties on the tax rolls and to have a cooperative to where you understand why we've had two MDAs fall through. And we're, we're coming to you for help in order to ascertain a path forward, which Doctor Woods uh, has worked tirelessly with a number of consultants in order to achieve. So when I say we haven't had support, this is one of those instances that we're coming to you for support.
I, I understand what you're saying, but I'm, I can't speak for a resident commission, but I can only speak for myself. Um, I have no idea what the challenges that you all have had, so that's just.
And naturally, I think, for the mission, and the mission passed, okay?
Just wanna back up and ask, you asked the question about which properties, and you said all of them. So you're referring to the four that are on the bucket here, you're interested in all the four of them, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then, thank you for sharing the challenging, the challenges that you all have come through. I need to know the properties that you all have come through and brought before this commission in which you have not received support.
Okay, well, that would be chronicled, again, I said, I wouldn't say, I don't know, Mayor, and Mr. Griffin, some historical data that was voted to all the commission and prior administration, I brought, to bring it forward from at or about this time, twenty eighteen, eighteen, there. And I will resend that to you also, okay? And notwithstanding what was, I'm more, I really am more adamant today as to where we are now.
Yeah, what I want to talk to you is, what is part?
Okay.
And what I'm gonna do, give off of this mission, so that we'll have a document and awareness process so that we can tell that the willingness to look for, that we can do that.
Happily, happily, I will do that, I will do that. And I, and I know that you and I, we met by property a number of times, we walk and talk, so notwithstanding, okay, and I can tell you, when I say notwithstanding, I'm encompassing a lot, because something as simple as reading an eighty-nine-year-five-year plan was worse and worse than the experience that no agency that I've ever been affiliated with had to do. So as simple as that, you know, to, let alone to the construction, the reconstruction. But when I tell you that outside influences sometimes affect internal processes, it's a reality. And we be fooling ourselves, we be putting blinders on, and we did, you know? At the end of the day, all we have is what we have today, we have the opportunity to go forward. And that's what I'm seeking to do, I will get all of the information that you requested to me. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, and with that said, there was also, again, a bit of discussion about the properties that the housing authority currently owns that they may watch and show up or not have any longer, specifically Jonathan, who described that property.
Well, I think what we spoke to Doctor Woods about was trying to better understand the repositioning and giving him an opportunity to talk about if they're looking at closing some of their facilities and replacing with new, what does that mean for the existing real estate, so that the commission and the public would kind of have an understanding of how public housing would evolve.
Well, the short of how that went is a little like this. The housing authority has approximately nine hundred applicants on its waiting list. The housing authority cannot afford to reduce its inventory with that number of families in need of affordable housing assistance. However, the housing authority does have in its possession some property that is void of structures that it has been seeking alternative uses for, even if not residential. Uh, some to the tune of even either business or retail, or leasing, or otherwise. Uh, but those are things that the housing authority is doing. I, I know that one of the properties that came up was Central Academy. While the housing authority does not have a budget for Central Academy, because the housing authority is a housing authority, um, and that Department of Education property, um, you know, that is something that we can possibly conjoin on and try to seek to work with for the benefit of the community as a whole. But that is the, uh, I know that we have Voice Base adjacent to Gen Z Home uh, right across the street from, you know, the Black Flag. But that is one of the properties that we were, had been looking into doing inside. But that is one of the properties that we were, had been looking into doing some type of business venture under land lease for. That's the only one. I do have property.
Oh, you got.
Uh, Jason, it's, it's Shreditch, uh, Gen Z home. Those are some of the properties that you have. Right, pressure, exactly.
They're, they're, they're more valuable to you.
So I did, if you'll allow me, I wanted to add something, uh, to the discussion about Central Academy. Um, the housing authority kind of expressed a concern that it's not within their normal duties to go looking at securing outside funding to clean up that property and maybe turn it over to a higher and better use. That is something that would fall typically under the purview of the city from a redevelopment perspective. Um, I do believe that it is likely that we could assist, um, or even secure funding at the federal or state level, um, to clean that property up. Um, and then ultimately turn it over, uh, to a higher and better use. Uh, I understand there need to be some conversation about how to honor the past of that property. Um, uh, I believe most people would agree that it's probably not reasonable to restore the existing structure. Um, but you do have some existing historical uses that need to be mitigated there. There was a, a fleet facility in operation for a number of years. Uh, and there's some other structures that would need to be removed from the property. But that was a partnership that we kind of conceptualized, you know, when we previously met. We wanted to offer that to the commission as maybe a, a path forward, uh, to see some results, some positive results at that site.
I guess we'll meet another time, first of all, that, that's not traditionally, and I would like to stay a little focused on workshop and what we're workshop at. So, with all the respect of you guys' vision, not at this time, I don't, I don't want to put on that load, sir. But to go back to the question that I asked about those, um, units, and you just, you guys even made it a little more clear. You own the property already, not the Central Academy property, you own other properties, again. The opportunity that been there, yes, just mentioning about the resources that you have, why haven't any of those minutes been raised? And, and, and I have had a tour on the housing authority board, served, and I asked them, I'm asking at this capacity now, why aren't they, and yeah, that is a big hot item. But those, that item have been an open item, not closed, so why haven't you done it? And if these areas are going to be targeted for that, or we're talking about work for the government, how they, of mixed use. Wait, and also, when you start talking about, just say this property will make use when we talk about retail at the bottom and housing at the top, now we're getting into, will we have to, or are we planning on giving tax credits, you know, when that could be used for a different type of developer that we would actually be receiving taxes for? So that's a question, and I know there's a lot of people questioning.
And that's, that's, yeah, I mean, that's, that's actually the point we're talking about dealing with specifically providing housing for work, not workable housing, but just affordable housing. So, that, that, I mean, that's a good question. I will go back to my initial statement, and I refer you both to Florida Senate Bill one oh two. Uh, I think you'll find that interesting read, and that will probably answer your questions.
And I just have a sign, um, and I thought on some, we have, Commissioner McCaslin, you wanna say something? Um, also, just I think to clarify, now that I've been on my view of that, we had a mixed use structure on that property, the commercial portion of it would be taxed, just to clarify, even though we residentially not.
Correct.
Not a mayor or, um, you want to have our council in the room, I don't know if it's appropriate to add council, if you can summarize Senate Bill one oh two for those that are not aware of the bill, it just got passed, I just can't, if you summarize what's in the Bill one oh two says, so that everyone in the room understands. And, and a brief summary of it. I know that you read it out, but kind of summarize in layman terms what it means, what it says.
I, I, I kind of know a little bit about, I mean, I know what you said. Do you know, I don't know a little bit about, like I said, looking for the, for, for the summary, but see, I do know that it didn't go following to thousand of them.
Let's have somebody who's read it.
They have to read the caption.
And, ma'am, it's a tiny thing.
I'm the chairman of the city. Um, okay, so, in short, it limits your commission's authority, from my understanding, on placing restrictions on us achieving our mission. That's just a one-second summary.
Okay, so.
Okay, uh. Was it today? It was in, yeah, it's effective July one. Effective July one, the Live Local Act, deleting the authority of local governments to adopt or maintain laws, ordinance and rules, et cetera, that would have an effect imposing controls on rents, providing an exemption from ad-humor taxation for lands that meet certain criteria, authorizing local governments to adopt ordinances to provide an ad-humor tax exemption for portions of property used to provide affordable housing, meaning certain requirements suspending for a specified period the general revenue fund service charge on dock stands, authorizing the governor under the Florida Job Growth Grant Fund to approve or state public infrastructure projects to facilitate the development or construction of affordable housing, et cetera. Appropriations seven hundred eleven million.
Back to my point, with affordable housing, and that's what I understood from that particular deal. And so, it was back to affordable housing. You're not hearing what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, you're saying the issues are, you know, you got business down below, and you got uh, port, me and portable housing, uh, residential up top. That's different. You can't, you can't live in a business. Or you should, we, you're not.
So that's absolutely right, and that's why we're here. So all, um, so we were joking about acronyms, right? ACC properties. What are ACC properties? We're just getting a check from HUD, right? We're getting a check from, from HUD, and we're getting reimbursed. That reimbursement rate is going down. Okay, so where do we want to be? Instead of being, uh, our property being owned essentially by us with a DOT deed of trust, I love acronyms, right? Deed of trust that prevents us from borrowing money against our own properties. We can't borrow money. Now, is it smart to borrow money now? Probably not the most intelligent thing to borrow money at seven percent at this moment. Okay, at this moment, rates will come down in the next year. When we started this venture together, if you remember, we were all sitting right here. Rates were what, three and a quarter? It made a lot of sense to try to borrow twenty-five million. Okay? And so, why are we here? We're trying to make our entity more attractive so we can build, get a night, get our sixty-two units, build more tax base. Okay, that commercial would be permitted within our nonprofit that is fully, uh, operated, uh, well technically owned and operated by our housing authority. There are no deeds of trust or preventions from us borrowing money as long as what we do is for the primary purpose of facilitating our mission statement, which is providing, providing affordable housing to, to more individuals. And that's our goal. If you look at South Carolina, they have, I mean, there were, their nonprofit is larger than their housing authorities in inventory in, in, uh, certain cities. That's our ultimate goal, ten years from now. And so, um, you know, I had a, just a conversation, I wanna, wanted to have our thirty-day goal, nine, sixty-day, ninety-day, uh, one-year, three-year, five-year, ten-year goal, that I wanted to share with you and how you can help us achieve that and all the benefits to your commission and to the city specifically as far as developing our tax base. Um, which is, which is in everyone's goal, and we have properties that we'll never be able to put a single-family home on that are very attractive to you, just as re- referenced by Mr. Griffiths and Dr. Woods. Now, the, the gen- and again, the genesis of this meeting was, uh, was our failure. Okay, it was our failure. We had two MDAs fall through. We chose entities to develop an MDA, master development agreement for our commission. Well, uh, one of them while Commissioner Jones was on the Boulevard Group, and then this last group, the Fordis Group. And people were bidding on our properties and bidding on this development, thirty, fifty, seventy million dollar potential development opportunity. And it wasn't worth it, it wasn't worth putting our mission at risk by signing a deal uh, that, uh, was not going to be a long-term attractive partnership for PHA. What's more attractive is for us to partner with our, our neighbors, okay? Which is the city of Plata, uh, and our local stakeholders.
Yeah, but that's why.
Yes, Commissioner.
That's a great steal.
You like that?
Yeah, but you know what? First mission is throughout public housing. And going back to the same question I'm asking to you, answered, somebody answered, sixty-two units, public housing to help people, that's the need. You got a list, ninety-some people, you said. So, no, sixty-two wouldn't be a lot taking off that list, but it is of people who actually need not affordable housing, they need good housing.
Any housing, any housing.
Right, but these particular folk that, uh, meet the requirements to be in a, a public consented housing, you, we, we trying to help them, so tell me, when we're talking.
I, I understand.
Okay, so.
So, why haven't we built those? Look at the minutes, for, I, I think I've missed three commission meetings in five years, may, may, maybe four. Ever since I'm chairman, uh, we have brought up at almost every single meeting, um, let's fund our nonprofit, let's spend our unrestricted money. Okay? Uh, while we're in the process of, of RFQs and RTs for the MDAs, for people to come in, okay, and bid on our projects, bring, you know, and bid on the development of our units. What is the purpose of that? The purpose is to create more, uh, more, more units, greater quality within our nonprofit. Now, if we went ahead and built the sixty-two units of ACC property, under some of the plans that Dr. Woods showed, we could immediately build those AC property, ACC properties and convert them under section eighteen, is that right? Under the section eighteen plan. However, we're less attractive if we have less liquidity as an entity. So we could go ahead and spend all of our money on those sixty-two units, but it would hamstring us in order for the larger plan for the rest of our four hundred and twenty units. So if we spend all of our money, what we're trying to do is leverage. You know, and that's why we're talking about real estate right now. We're talking about real estate, we'd like to leverage that, and we don't want to own it, we want our nonprofit. And that way, we can borrow and leverage, and we can build a cooperative with, with the city. Does that answer your question on why we didn't spend our unrestricted money? That's very old.
Sixty-two units, mm-hmm. Before the meeting, you were talking about the estate that's going on in South Platte.
Mm-hmm, down in February. So, I was speaking, so in South Platte, and this is the interesting part about, uh, as we develop Plata, the nonprofit is not confined by the restraints of only developing in Plata. We're coming here because the need is in Plata.
I think that, yeah, I think that is what I've, not the concern, but one that I still question about, and that's who I just.
Part of the application, I think, is that there is a question. Both that I'm gonna ask and to vote for a question, but I took one of them as one. On the application, are one of the questions is, are you a US citizen? That's one of your questions. Are you a US citizen? How many of the regulars are part of the, that's on the waiting list that are from Platte County?
We have a number on the waiting list as far as residents per unit.
From Platte County.
Oh, they're all, I think they're all from.
Now, although the preference.
Yeah, although for, for.
Yeah, you get a preference for being, as far as actions, I don't have that much.
She actually asked my question, but I do have a question, and this is more so for the interim city manager. Um, and just kind of thinking how we got to this. I'm gonna kind of rewind. The properties that have been listed have others aside of the Laker Housing Authority express any interest?
So these properties have not been listed, and we were still waiting on authorization from the commission to list.
So then going back to our last meeting, how did we get to this? Uh, the housing authority came up under the agenda item where staff was presenting the available surplus lands and requesting direction to list, then Dr. Woods expressed an interest that the housing authority, um, had in those properties and the workshop was scheduled. So, at that meeting, and I'm just asking questions, trying to get to a point, at that meeting, there were individuals who expressed interest in some of the properties. Oh, yes. Why was preference given to the Laker Housing Authority versus allowing others who have been, or who are interested, to go through the same process or have the same deals as, as the property as the Laker Housing Authority therefore? Because going back, and I'm making the point, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Born, Commissioner McCaslin asked, and I'm very, I've been on this thing for eight years, so I've seen where the Laker Housing Authority has come before. I've seen where the conversations have, even when they were building the two houses that were on, um, on Laurel Street. And Commissioner McCaslin just brought up a point of South Platte, South Platte, and then walk public housing in their area. That's why you all are saying that the need is here in Plata. If there is a need for housing, no matter where they, no matter where the houses are built, they're gonna get there. And so, the conversation also at that time was, we didn't want any additional public housing in the city. So my question is, even getting to, circling back around, how did we get to, we're at this point, but then again, there are others that are interested that would be able to build, and those properties will be taxed at the value of what we need here in our city. I am no way, no shape, no form saying that we do not need affordable housing, subsidized housing, or any other kind of housing. However, again, we have a duty as we sit here on this diet to make sure that our tax base can. However, again, we have a duty, as we sit here on this diet, to make sure that our tax base continuously grows. And then again, as of July one. We don't really have a say in anything up there. So, if we were to make a decision, if we were to gonna make a move. It needs to be done by Ju- the last day in June to ensure that our thoughts. Our concerns, our desires are fully put in, if not, no need.
You wanna say it? Yeah, and just briefly, I think. Commissioner Jones, he always correct, we went on, I think that she asked preferential. And we were told that we can't preferential, and that's about the preference part, I love. Uh, I think, yeah, that's how it came up. I'm not saying that we, I think I don't, but I think in the last meeting. That's how we got to the preference part, we came to the meeting. And the individual that was interested in the property was here at the meeting, and we. Said that we're gonna have a workshop, am I correct? We said it. So, with that being said. Is it safe to say, and the meeting was noticed, the workshop is noticed, am I right? So, with that being said, would it be fair to say that they would have had the opportunity to give this workshop to give input?
No, because it was specifically for the Palatka Housing Authority. It wasn't for anybody who was interested in the properties as a whole. Now, if that would have been the thing, that's how it should have been.
So, I wanna ask this, that's why I said, if I'm wrong. So, in the meeting, refresh my memory. We did say with the Palatka Housing Authority, and I thought to be wrong that we brought it up and said that we couldn't give them preference. But others come as well, and I thought maybe that you chime in, except for others to come as well, but correct, correct me if I'm wrong. Is, is that what you just said? Okay, I, I could be wrong, 'cause I thought it's something in the meeting, you chime in, or I, I, I missed it.
I, I wanna make sure, wasn't the guy that was here, who's no longer here, wasn't he the individual that expressed interest in one of the properties? And if we're looking at the way that this is presented. It doesn't get input really for anybody else who's interested in a property.
And I would think from the outset, this workshop was designed, to be honest, I mean. Commissioner Jones did bring up the housing authority, and this is what this workshop was focused on, for these properties. It wasn't anybody else.
I just did wanna put it on the record, there have been others that have expressed interest in these properties. Um, this workshop was scheduled as a result of Dr. Woods coming up under the last agenda item, saying that P H A had an interest. So, the specific purpose of this workshop was to discuss the P H A's interest and how it related to their repositioning plan. Um, I've spoken to this Thomas about this, um, we do believe that the best course of action, regardless of what you decide to do with P H A. Is to most likely, um, entertain other proposals, be it through requests for proposals or an invitation to negotiate. But through those different, um, advertisements, you fell out, you're intent with those properties, so if it is for affordable housing. You can evaluate the responses based upon that attempt, intent. If it is to just put it on the tax rolls and get the highest and best price. You can put that in the R F P or an invitation to, to negotiate.
I simply just want us to be fair. I want us to have a process that regardless of who. Is interested in the property, that everyone has a say with it. We did the same thing when we had the conversation about. Uh, Hemet Hall. We want to be fair, and then again, I'm not getting into public housing. I wanna make that totally clear. But again, as we sit behind this diet, or as I sit behind this diet. I wanna make sure that everyone has, who has a best interest in the moving this city forward. That they have a seat at the table. We always talk about having skin in the game, having a seat at the table. Just imagine the man who walked out of here, who wanted to be at the table, but didn't have the opportunity to be at the table. So, I don't, I don't really need a response, because my, my statement is my.
I'm actually trying to go all the way back to Commissioner Jones, reaching a question. With, where he, where he was asking why the agency had not constructed the sixty-two brick block. First and foremost, we don't have property within our inventory that can accommodate such a. Right? Uh, even if we were to, if, if I were to try and find the ways and means to repurpose. Uh, and I know it came up, and I know you said it later today, but the only thing closest to the acreage needed for such a deal would be Central Academy. And that would be repurposed for that particular use. You know, aside from that, if you don't have a state of law, that would be amenable to such a deal.
But let, so since all other questions on the board of, of the answer, let me clarify. I was that guy that said, the lack of housing authority is basically the city's housing agent. So, this, this meeting is doing exactly what I think is intended to do, and I didn't ask for the meeting, what we're trying to get out of this meeting. But it, it, it lies right here. And what I hear, everybody's hearing the same thing. But for all intents and purposes, I wanted to hear what the housing authority's goal, scope, and purpose was going forward. We hear that, and we, we should be able to make decisions based upon their presentation to us. In the needs of the city. Wasn't, so, so when I say preference, meaning here from the first, that's it. That's clarity. As for the sale of the properties, I agree, it should go through the process of being going through, alright? So, I thank you on doing their presentation, and what I'm hearing is. Being an investor versus the housing agent right now, because you guys, and you know, what seems like you presenting to us. About your not-for-profit, being an investor and wanting to actually invest in property and development here in Palatka, okay? Um, so, Commissioner Campbell and Valentine have stated, I mean, McCaskill, excuse me, stated. You're basically in a pool with everybody else, but doesn't return to the private dust. And I'm talking about like a housing authority, and that's why I keep saying sixty-two units, because that is something that. You guys owe city of Palatka, and, 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 and your residents. Because residents were, just, just in history, residents were misplaced. They were displaced, excuse me, displaced when they tore out the high-rise. And they spent the building that was built, and it didn't accommodate all. So, we still have. Let's just say, be honest with it, with like a better term, but it is determined that should be you, homeless people. We have sixty-two people that didn't have a home. And it should be addressed, and I think we're doing a disservice if we don't at least attempt of making a good, fair effort. In giving them a priority somewhere a little. That's what I'm saying. So, so now you see my concerns of why I was talking about that. So, when you reference, I was on the board, I know that, and that's a board that needs to be filled, and I hope that we could assist. And those sixty-two units, sometimes shape or form, that's, that's what I wanna clear that over.
You, you did, you did, you actually addressed everything that needs to be addressed with regards to. But you misinterpreted what the chair was saying. He's saying that from the vantage point of the not-for-profit. Because that was who owned, would be managing, right? But the bill of the sixty-two units, they are affordable housing units. They are the same, you have, in all the years you've known me, you have ne- never heard me refer to our property as public housing. Public, public housing, that takes on a whole different context. You've heard me say affordable housing. And for the section eight program, you've heard me say assisted housing. Sir, I know you didn't require or request or respond, but you need to know. That the housing authority has a jurisdiction to work within. The housing authority has a jurisdiction to work within. That's where those sixty-two units have to go. It's not because of housing needed here and needed there, it's because of where the jurisdiction, the boundary lies. The chalk lines are pop, the ladder, resource. That's why they have to go within the city limits, because that's, that's very redesignable.
I understand that. I was speaking, I was speaking to the various meetings and the things, 'cause we brought up. About things, we brought up all of those things, so I, I was getting to a point, I know about the jurisdiction.
And they found it on that, I said, how the dog, a public property, we can go down there and keep wait, but it'll be one thousand three hundred units.
I think we all understand that this issue of people displaced, um, remember that it may be, and that required to meet that need, um, Commissioner McAskey.
And I'm, I'm glad you brought up that, that, um, that point. Because I think that we just need to do a better job, you know, there's no harm intended to our commission, but. Just like you did a great job for your point of clarity, explaining what you mean, when you bringing that up. I think if we would have done that before, and during the last meeting, before that young man, that gentleman left out of here. It would have been, um, maybe we would have got feeling that out, outing that out of your building. And I just think we need to do a better job of explaining, uh, clarifying what we need. So, thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner.
And, you want to say something, right, you still?
So, I wanted to address, uh, Commissioner Campbell's assertion about equity or fairness regarding the properties. Uh, that we're discussing. Um, I'm a capitalist. I think that the best. Use, uh, of the property will be dictated by who's willing to pay the most for it, right? Uh, because that person can make the most use out of it. This is your property. This is your property as a city. Now, you could get a certain amount of money from us. If you could get twenty-five dollars more from another individual, you're being a good capitalist. By taking twenty-five dollars more from another individual. We're your partners. We're housing your, your residents. We're trying to build and expand upon our mission. And we're attempting to. Rate the rates, to redevelop, to renovate, to create, uh, a safer. Uh, environment for all of our residents and for more residents. If we start earning more profits, we can build as many section eight units as we like, okay? So, we can start building single-family homes. We can begin, so, I want. You know, as, as far as potentially selling, like. It was brought up whether or not this commission supports the Palatka Housing Authority, and that this commission has never supported the Palatka Housing Authority. We're coming here to ask you your support, like, I don't, okay? I've been a broken record, asking for another workshop. For three years, and as we've been going through this M D A. So, if we wanna take, if your commission decides to take bids on all of these various properties. For potentially getting more than we're willing to pay or trade some of our valuable properties. That's our answer as far as the support that we're being rendered. Um, I think that our success is going to lead to even greater success for the city of Palatka. As we're able to facilitate more individuals, more money coming in federally. Tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars more every single month, coming in from federal vouchers, okay? As opposed from money being moved from one pocket, from a citizen in Palatka to another pocket. We're getting injected with capital from a federal level as you support our entity. And so, I wasn't really prepared to, uh, present on that point. But I think our success really does lead to more success for the city of Palatka, because so much more money is going to be injected to increase the economy. So, if there's a gentleman here that wanted to buy the property and wanted to pay negligibly more, or even if you gave it to us. Versus selling it for two hundred thousand, we'll make you tenfold that over the next ten years. By expanding upon what we're offering. Does that make sense?
That sounds good, for everybody. And we wanna make sure that everyone has the same opportunity, because you don't know what that person's gonna build on that property. You can't speak to the future, you can't speak to the right now. And giving individuals the opportunity to have the same buy-in that you have, is what we're here to do. Now, we hope that everyone who builds on a property, who has access to the property, do the right thing with the property. Again, we're not trying to keep anybody homeless. But then again, we wanna make sure that if you wanna be at the table, be at the table. If they wanna be at the table, give them the opportunity to be at the table. That, that's my only thing. That's, I understand jurisdiction, I understand, I understand absolutely everything that you said. And I wholeheartedly, that was the attorney, right? So. That, that's a, so. So, the same passion that you speak with, I'm speaking with as well. We have to provide the same opportunity. I can't sit here and say, I'm gonna give somebody else the same, another opportunity. I, I have to, my balance has to be completely. It just has to be the same way, it has to be there. And so, the only thing, and I'm gonna bring this up, 'cause Commissioner Jones shut it down. What I heard as a part of this conversation was some way, somehow acquiring Central Academy. I don't know about y'all, but in the conversation, I, Commissioner Jones shut it down very quick. And when, um, when Jonathan had the opportunity to see. Some way, some shape, somehow, that is gonna come back, and that's gonna be something that's gonna be a heavy hitter. When it's time to have a conversation about moving forward. I may be wrong, but based on the conversation and the benefits. If we acquired it in the state and the condition at its end.
One thing I would like to say, that I know that we have. Probably gone around Upper Street back in the day. Uh, but at the end of the day, for full disclosure, I wanna say that in my meeting, with Jonathan Mayer and, or Mr. Griffith. I did say, I can't recall anything being specific to the cooperation agreement. But I recommended or suggested that you all check your bylaws. To ensure that there was nothing as it pertains to partnerships between the two entities, because of what. Uh, Commissioner Jones said, and that is because the housing authority is in existence. Partly because of the city's cooperation, cooperation agreement. So, uh, with that in itself, I don't know if that afforded any type of preference with regards to the operating property or anything of that nature. But at the end of the day, even in that, I said, if you do what's an investment of the city, and I think both will attest to that. So, we're not in, we're not in the business, I said, as asked, when asked, which property you want? I said, I'm not greedy, I'm needy, I take them all. That did not, I did not say that I will have all of them at the end of this discussion. That's not what I was saying. My preference was, because I know the more that we can acquire, the more we can leverage, the more we can leverage. The quicker we can get on board for enhancing all of the initiatives. In a perfect world, that's why you saw that dated information. In a perfect world, that dated information would have yielded. At least two to three long-term housing tax credit deals to date. That would have afforded this agency an opportunity to pour those non-federalized dollars into the enhancement and improvement of Central Academy. That did not happen, right? So, I can't go back in time and bring that time back. So, the dilapidation that occurred from that point to this one is there, that is what you see. But I don't have those non-federalized dollars as a result of three more successful long-term housing tax credit deals. From developer teams that we had hoped to garner, to be able to utilize toward that thing. So, but at the end of the day, we have today. Let's take today and let's move forward the best way we can. And I thank you for your support, the continued support, and whatever information that you need, I'll give to you, okay? And I will restand and I will send again. But I just want you to know that we're in the business of providing. Housing that is decent, safe, sanitary, and good with them. I vowed some five years ago. That P H A would be good-natured, and that's what we intend to do, even to this day. Thank you for your support, time, and consideration.
There's something about the value of the partnership that improves the
Thank you for hearing us and our position. Um, we'll keep coming back and asking for additional workshops. Uh, I think that having an understanding of what all the acronyms are, what the ten-year plan is, what the five-year plan is. Not what one transaction will look like, whether or not it's the most amount of money that we can make on one day. But what the revenue, you know, if all we care about is revenue, our success is your success. We'll have a forty, fifty, sixty million dollar project once this MDA takes off. We have new consultants to help us to succeed in this project and revitalization. So this is the first conversation, and I think that literacy and the intricacies, so I've been on board for five or six years, I'm learning more things every, every time I do a workshop. Uh, at a federal or state level, every time I read what's going on, I'm learning something. And we should all learn this together, because our success is your success. I'm very excited about additional conversations about why a short-term great decision may not be the long-term best decision. Okay, and I think I'd like to, uh, end that plea, uh, to get preference from the city on that point.
And I think so that we would be, or we go ahead and schedule another workshop, so we can be brought to term with regards to the acronyms and the, you know, the things that were just stated.
And so, are we having a workshop just to be educated on something? Or because I hope that we don't have to come back. Uh, I think you did a great job, a wonderful job in educating us on what we need to be educated on. I hope that we don't have to come back to the table for workshops. I hope at some point we can strengthen our partnership with the housing authority. Now, I don't want to come back just to be educated on that. Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Campbell.
Acronym dictionary, um, I think that we need to get to that strength and I would think positive part of that one. I, and I, again, I'm not there for the previous workshop. Was there a table below and what is the opposition for round table kind of setting? I just think, I feel like we're talking about
We went there before. We, we went out there. We were, we went out there to them, and I think that will be good. We went out to your center one time, and I think that was very nice. They've come up a couple of times. If the commission is not objective to that, Commissioner Borum, Commissioner Jones.
It's feasible to hold the meeting there. There just may be some limitations on how and what we can stream to the public.
I, I, I think, I think here is the best form due to, because of your reasons right there, you know, we're streaming. Uh, we don't have to be placed in Florida. And, and We're finally coming, waiting here, I mean. So I was around somewhere right here, they happen to be sitting, they're sitting right across from us.
Yeah, every more barriers.
Well, it's a workshop. It's the only time that we're able to, and so if you got me here away, away from my job. I'm probably making the best use of this time, um, because we did, there are things like this, we really do, we did stuff a little more and do them in detail. And if we really want to know uh, the role that PHA is playing, um, it's, it's the time to ask now, because maybe, see where my challenge is with you and Jonathan have a conversation with the CEO. We need to have a knowledge about it. So when things do come up, I guess this is the only time that I could ask you about it or ask the city. Uh, what are your thoughts? And, and here we are, if Commissioner Campbell wouldn't went back to it. That would have helped probably pull our heads. Um, and we can kind of like openly, I wouldn't want to do that about the end of the month. But what I'm saying is, once we start talking about things, confused him. Want to clarify, what I'm saying, for example, what? So, eh, the first question is, I think because it's a open to the public meeting. It's a workshop, um, this will be probably the best, because we want actually other folk to come in to actually participate. We did have a option for public discussion or portioning. So the gentleman that you guys speaking of, he could have spoke. And, and if it was unfair to him or unclear, he could, he had opportunity at that point. So we did not exclude him. Yeah, no, I'm making this, Campbell is still saying no. So, I'm saying my piece. So, at that point, he could have said something, or asked the house, or, or gave his attention. I think so. Um, and that's why it's more, I think it's more invited here to just some of the I think it's more inviting to the public to come participate if we do, so.
I disagree. Think about how many times we've gone into the community and we've had a greater response because we met people where they were. A lot of people are intimidated. Are intimidated by these chambers. A lot of people feel as if their words matter when we come into this venue. So that's why I made a suggestion, if we're looking for a greater buy-in, let's meet them where they are.
I don't know, probably, never been in a weak side. I think first of all, like it's a compromise if we're not going to go to the housing, it's already a shell. Um, it depends on what the community wants to do.
Any way we can eliminate failures.
Well, we could have, I mean, we can head down before, like Right, so when this came about, I'm just fitting in how it was set up. I had no part in that. So, but I'm sort of short, for the reason to go, so we can get the greatest um, participation and, and let's see what we can do in trying to partnership and make a pact with that.
Yeah.
Whichever venue we decide, I feel like my marching orders from your commission are to demonstrate why solidifying our relationship and ensuring our success long-term means a lot more to the city of Palatka than short-term decisions that may appear negligibly more profitable, but collectively harm the citizens that can benefit the most from affordable housing. And so irrespective of the venue, those are my marching orders to demonstrate economically why that's a good decision. I'm very excited to demonstrate, uh, why that relationship is so important.
With that being stated, are we considered price margin?
I would, I would, price margin, I mean, wherever we can go, we can get the greatest And we, you know, the city can string there as well, like so can string there.
We can, Commissioner, but the quality of it is, is not that great. So my recommendation would be, if you do not have the meeting where you're sitting on the dais. Even if you set it up in here or at the PHA or Price Market, that we don't try and strip. That we just record the meetings and we encourage people to come out and take part at the location. If the intent is to go meet people where they're at, um, I don't think the intent would be to stream them.
I feel like we are coming with excuses versus trying to formulate a solution. And I think there's times to be now and then, we just did it before, we can do it at the moment. And if you don't excuse it, it's by a revolution. And then if we don't find that revolution, we resort back to the first thing. But let's find a revolution, find a, because we go with the tool with the excuse, which means we not even looking at the option of.
With that said, I think we were saying, just not be excusable to stream. I don't know. I, I think we should be going out to the community on some occasions, going to the drop meetings, so that we can get different questions and really involve. I think that's important, and we do seem to be isolated here. Um, folks aren't coming in as much as we'd like. I'd rather have more people here about this conversation than just a few. I think a lot of people raise issues, concerns they may have about the housing authority, but they're not here actively, both sides. I think that we do need to go to them, I guess. But anyway, it may not be a quality stream, but still we stream, you know, maybe. I'm, I'm probably going to have a very poor question, even though I'm going to be like
But, but how was it that they probably didn't, right?
So that's
That's an erroneous statement. That is a misstatement. The housing authority has been open to the swing your doors and, and we do have that close sense. You got no sign outside, saying that Yeah, the housing authority is open for business and has been since August of twenty eighteen. So you guys are allowing business, but are you guys, uh, taking applicants in or residents in the lobby at all?
Sir, I was defending my, the other day. I was not there in my official capacity. Whatever, whatever works, I, I didn't want to try to, whatever we can and help, make a city report.
It's still a north shop, man. By housing. This, this by how it was closed. Um, as we speak on housing and the lower street address came up about two minutes. Um, since those units have any other units of that, um, type where residents go from um, the traditional project based housing to, uh, housing that they could possibly have ownership of. And, uh, and if so or not, um, how many participates that we have in that program currently, in what the condition for the future?
We currently have approximately ten or twelve NSP homes that are eligible for liars, some of their sales. While they are occupied. In fact, two of those twelve homes are already under mortgage. And so we're in the process now of determining the eligibility and or the desire of the current occupants to purchase. Uh, and from there, that is where we're going to revert, if you will, uh, on home ownership.
This is start. I follow that, I follow that program. That's what we're starting, encouraging, right, while there's instead of home ownership. That's three plus.
Anything else from you?
I said we start waiting on time and locations for the workshops.
I think the location will be, I mean, if we can't find something between now, being there, the whole, the competition that uh, with regard to who I am, makes sense. Commissioner Borum, my career.
Uh, yeah, well, the streaming, uh, but, uh, we've asked Let's ask the city clerk about in terms of from a legal standpoint of having a meeting the public available, do we have to have a stream? Do we have to stream?
Madam Mayor? Hi, it's Valeria. There's no there is no requirement for streaming. We just have to have notification that is a public meeting and have public have access to come to the meeting.
Thank you. So that's all, that's all we need, so we can have a meeting.
So let's come up with a date. Well, I, I'm saying rather than that, then without, without mine, you could have it at the
We will be at the home housing authority, stringing with the, of this legal need and mandate, it would be inherent in there.
The, the streaming is something that the city just implemented during COVID when we were, when it was allowed to have Zoom meetings. And it's something that we have just continued to provide as a service to um, the commit, the, to the city and our, our community.
So, so in, in the notice, we could, could we just say once we advertise the meeting that it will not be streamed? Would that be sufficient, or we don't even have to make note of it?
I don't think any of our notices say that.
Okay, so we just, we just, we just publicly We did a notice meeting?
Right. As an informational, uh, point of view, you can say that it will not be live streamed. And then that way, that will certainly reduce the number of calls at City Hall asking for the access. You know, code.
Do we need to make a note that, but, okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, but then dates. Yeah.
How long would you need to get your presentation?
I think that, uh, as opposed to a presentation, I'm looking for a discussion. And, uh, a demonstration of why our groups should work more closely together.
The reason I ask is because we need to have, whether we need to have, because we know who legislation takes first, I mean, takes place on the first, if we want.
So we don't have a lot of time to
Maybe we'll make ourselves a bit, uh.
And you have a workshop on Friday?
Strategic plan and update on our
So, I would say if I'm finding I believe we have to, Commissioner.
The fifteenth, the fifteenth? On, 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 uh, uh, fourteen? Industry?
I mean, that's fine.
What about by Zoom?
By me?
By Zoom? Tuesday, thirteen?
Is that thirteen or fourteen was fine with me? What time of day are we talking?
Uh, maybe earlier in the afternoon? No, later in the afternoon? Okay.
And we don't say later, and I'll be transparent. We, for the, us educators, we don't get off until five, that's twelve. We don't have the luxury of being off over the summer, so.
And some of us have a business
We weren't, you know, we
Uh, Friday, June sixteen?
Friday, June sixteen, we got a special call soon.
So, what happened? Is thirteen or fourteen? One of those?
Uh, Ms. Commissioner Campbell could make a mistake, correct?
I said we don't get off.
The Friday.
We have five meetings that are happening.
So you want to meet earlier in the day?
And then it's the, uh, Commissioner McCaslin. Or the week after, of the calendar.
Thank you very much.
You know, as an administrator, how busy we are. I have, I have business time in the year.
So
Okay, we're not getting anywhere. I would say, uh
Okay, Friday's our bill.
We have a city clerk that can coordinate and just Let's do that.
But absent, absent this taking place before July first.
Yes.
Absent that occurrence, be emphatically um, the project that we're trying to achieve to help as many residents in this community as possible um, is, I think, the single largest project that our entity has ever endeavored to take upon itself. We're looking at minimally thirty to fifty million dollars of money being pumped into the local economy. So irrespective of what we can get for a single piece, we're ready to develop it immediately. we're ready to develop it immediately and apply immediately to get this done. And so, if we're not able to have the meeting when it comes up in the next city commission, please know that our success is your success and the city's success, the county's success. And we're looking at a lot of money being ejected from the state or federal coming to our community, helping our contractors, retail workers, et cetera. So, I, I hope that we can effectively schedule the meeting, but if not, you know, I pray that this is a moment that we can ask you for help for things that you have that you're not making use of that will make great, great use out of it, okay? So, thank you.